So I believe the five council members is attended. We're gonna start, uh, Callexico City Council. City of Callexico, Fernando Neri, uh, okay. Callexico City Council Special Meeting on the July fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. We opened the meeting today. Uh, it's three or four. Call for the, a call to order, roll call? We all, all, uh, I mean, yeah, okay. We, we don't have to roll call, originally. So all five council members were attended. Is there any, uh, I have a-
Trying to do a pledge of allegiance?
No, that's for the open meeting. Yeah. A close session of the city, Callexico City Council, Callexico Community Development Agency Succession Agency, Callexico Financing Authority may be held in accordance with state law, which may include it, but is not limited to the following type of time items: personal matter, labor negotiation, security matters, providing instruction to real property negotiation, and the conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. The close session will be held in the City Hall Conference Room located at six oh eight Hiva Avenue, Callexico, California. Any problem, any, any public comment on close session item will be taken before the close session. Any required announcements or discussion of a close session items or action following the close session will be made in the City's Council Chambers, six oh eight Hiva Avenue, Callexico, California. I believe this time before we receiving the, starting the public comment, I'd like to, uh, attorney to, what the, uh, our agenda pulled to the City Council, um, in the close session.
Yeah, to clarify, again, we have two closed session items tonight. The first is Employee Performance Evaluation Government Code, section five four nine five seven B one for the city manager. We will also be discussing, uh, consideration of the police chief contract, um, in closed session as well. That's listed as item number two. So if there are any public comments before closed session on either of those items, uh, we'll have to take them now before we adjourn to closed session.
Thank you. Have a person who wants to talk about the city manager evaluations. Person's name is Mike Bostick. You got three minutes, sir.
So for the members of the community, that's who I'm here to speak to tonight. Um, in my thirty-five years of law enforcement, I have never seen a more unprofessional city council that continually interferes with my criminal and internal investigations in the police department. Tonight is an attempt to stop those criminal and internal investigations, and that's what they're hoping to accomplish by eliminating my contract and eliminating me as the chief of police. And, um, I've been in this business for a very, very long time. I've never seen city councilmen running around talking to police officers about personnel complaint investigations, talking on the internet, divulging personnel information to the public on a pretty routine basis, talking about, uh, negotiations for contracts, which by the way, they've never done with me yet in nine months. And, um, and frankly, I'm, I'm baffled by the continual lack of truth and honesty and transparency to the community. So I can't let it go. I want you as the public to know what your city council is choosing to do on a daily basis, and they make it nearly impossible for me to be a professional chief of police and run your police department. They meddle every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is, uh, Benjamin Holton.
Are we talking both one and two together or just one? Then we go to two? Which one are you talking about, Mr. Kim?
Well, you can, you can both together, whatever's.
Okay. All right, I have to concur with the chief what he said. And I, if you want, I have firsthand knowledge that the city council have interfered with the ability for him to do his job. And, uh, there was a point where today, and I want everybody to know today, I had a interview with the district attorney in reference to matters that I considered to be a felony that the city council, not as a whole, but certain city councilmen's are committing. And they took a report, and they have opened a report to do some investigation if it did take place.
Excuse me, this one's not in the, your agenda. This is, uh, is the-
Well, this has to do with the-
Your personal matter is not agenda.
Public comment, you said we could talk about the closed session.
No, close session item only, which is city manager evaluation and, uh, the Chief Bostick's, uh-
Okay, let's say about his evaluation and, uh, the city manager. I already hear that the, uh, certain individuals in the city council, and they all know who they are, talked to Mr. Ement about becoming the city manager. And, uh, apparently he said no to them. So in other words, the city council, ladies and gentlemen, are trying to impede the city manager and his ability to do his job. And I think this is pretty serious. When you're trying to, we agreed that he would be the city manager, but we're gonna go around and keep on impeding his ability to do the job. Now, there will be those who say, well, Ben is a friend of the city manager. This is what's going on. No, I have respect for his ability. And if you remember what the city was like, and I'm sure a lot of you are here, sitting here, remember what the city was like before he came here, and what the city could be if he continues. But we have people that keeps on impeding his ability to do the job. Now, we're gonna have a review, but I always thought, uh, you have a review on his performance, but yet you had not set the standards that he should be reviewed on. Nothing's been said. Nothing's been etched in stone, if I can use that corn, that phrase. And, uh, where are we at here? Now, I'm gonna talk in reference to the chief. I don't know if that's included in the, in, uh, three minutes, or do we, it comes under all of one, three minutes? It continues, I would think. Now, we're talking about the chief. I always believe, ladies and gentlemen, you look at the performance before you start talking about the person or anything such as that. You look at the performance, what the city has became under his stewardship, if I can use that phrase. I think this chief has tried to work with the, uh, with the city council, with the city as a whole. I ask you, how many of the city council have reached out to meet with the city, the chief of police? But they make it a point, I don't respect you, I don't care about you, I won't talk to you. And is that a good way to start a good relationship? Now, there are those that figure the city would be what I want it to be. But remember this, ladies and gentlemen, we give them, which I say the city council, the ability to govern, or I should say administrate. There's, no, I shouldn't even use that, I take that back. They set policy, and we leave it up to the chief of police, the city manager, to administer those policies. How many policies have they set or guidelines with the, with the chief or even the city manager? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next person. Okay. Maribel Padilla. And next person will be Ernie Medina.
It's amazing that you've been here a week as mayor, and we have two special council meetings. Two. And you're the one that wants to look at what we're spending. And in a week, we've had two special meetings. You, you have to pay spectrum to record. And then you do it at three o'clock when people are out working. Not everybody can take the time off like I do. I took an hour off to be here, and I shouldn't have. This should be during regular hours where the community can come. That is the transparency. But I guess not in your kingdom, Mr. Kim, because we didn't even have a pledge of allegiance at this meeting this time. Are we changing that too? You people need to get your act together. Really, you know what? As a matter of fact, vote no. Get rid of the manager, get rid of the chief. So then JPI can go ahead and cancel us, and the state can come and take us over. When the state comes, they'll get rid of all of you. Like I've said before, you people are useless, all of you. And don't tell me today that it's Moreno who called the meeting, like you did last meeting. And Mr. Moreno, and Mr. Real, and listen to what I'm going to say. You don't get to walk out of that meeting and go home when you leave all these people sitting here to see what happened at the end. We are paying you to do a job, and your job is to sit there, I don't care how frustrated you are, I don't care how frustrated you are, you sit there and you work it out. You do not walk out. I don't walk out, these people don't walk out. You guys should be ashamed of yourself. And Mandy, you're getting a habit of doing that shit, so quit it. Quit that. You want it to be-
Please.
-a council person?
Please.
You're getting paid, whether you're giving it away or not, you are here to do a job. And you do it inside, and you stay inside till it's done.
Ms. Padilla, please use your language as a normal language.
Yes, Mr. Kim.
It should not be a slender language, please.
Yes, Mr. Kim. Okay? That's how frustrated you get me. Do you see me walking out? People, get your act together. This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. Two meetings in a week? In your reign, Mr. Kim, two meetings already. What are we to expect? So yes, get rid of them. Let the state take over, and we'll be done with all of you. Because the first thing they're gonna do is get rid of you, because you caused this mess. You will be going down in infamy as the worst council ever to sit here in Callexico. The worst. Have you met with the chief, Mr. Castro? I'll take that as a no. Mr. Kim, have you met with the chief? I'll take that as a no. And yet you get to go in there and try to fire him when you haven't even met with him to try to come to an agreement, to a contract? He's getting paid all this money because you guys haven't come to a contract. Sit down, get a contract going, and let's move this city forward. Quit your little compadre crap. We're tired of it.
Thank you. Next, next person, Ernie Medina. Following the person, Margaret Sousa.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm here actually to speak on both items of the position of the city manager and the police chief. For once, we have two of the most professional, knowledgeable individuals holding those positions. And you are making every effort to remove professionalism out of the way. I, I need to bring, uh, to your attention that none of you, and I'm speaking of all five, were elected by the people to micromanage. None of you. None of you know anything from Chinola about being a city manager, nor being a police chief, a fire chief, a water plant operator, or any other department. The chief of police has over thirty-some years, thirty-five years of experience in the field. None of you have any experience in the field of law enforcement. But yet, you sit there trying to tell him how to do his job. The same with the city manager. You want to evaluate them? I think the people should evaluate you. Because this is not what you are there to do. You're there to set policy and move this city forward. This council has been nothing but causing nothing but turmoil. But yet, one thing I have never heard under the short period, anything about economic development coming from you, about bringing more business here, more employment, all you do is talk about destruction. How about working with the merchants? I have a direct communication, a liaison between the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Callexico to work out these grievances that the merchants might have and come to a solution. And I'm very surprised, to some degree, when the chief of police mentions that the council is interfering with their, with their investigations. Because if I, because I did twelve years with the Department of City of Callexico, and I did thirty years with the federal government, and if any of you interfered with any of my investigations, I, I would slap the damn handcuffs on your ass so fast we're interfering with a criminal investigation and put you before the district attorney in the courts. That is not your job, to tell the chief of police how to manage the department.
Pay attention, Mr. Kim.
So please, do the right thing and let them manage. And Mr. Kim, again, do the right thing, step down and resign. You have no business sitting up there. I know you don't understand what we're telling you, perhaps you don't, it doesn't go in. But you have no business. Please do the right thing and step down and resign your position. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person, Sousa Margaret.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Margaret Sousa, and I'm the senior senator for the seniors in Imperial County. And I am also the director for the Shore Healthline Crisis Center. I wanna let you know that this is my hometown. I grew up here, I went to school here. And a lot of people that I love live here. And I can only speak for what I've seen and what I've heard, because I'm not the type that goes and believes what other people said. Because thirty years ago, I was falsely accused of grand theft by a chief of police that we had. After a few months, oh, I'm sorry, it was a mistake. The money was in another bank. So I know what it is. I know what it is to be in a place where there's all kinds of accusations. I, I have family here, I have loved ones here, so I've seen. You know, my idea of coming here was just to voice out what I felt, and I wasn't picking sides. But the more I sit there, the more saddened my heart gets. Because as a director of the Shore Healthline Crisis Center, for months, if not years, we never got a rape complaint from this community. And you're not gonna tell me that there's no rape here. But they were found under the drawers thrown.
No way.
They were never taken to the DA.
No way.
The victims that go to my office, one lady called the cops. That's before the new chief came on board. And her husband had beaten her up. The officer would not even bother with him, it's compadre. A lady called because her son was on drugs. He was wild, crazy. And you've had a few killings here for kids on drugs. You've had a few ugly ones. And you know what happened? She said the officer was more drugged up than her son. That's how bad he was. So you know what? You better open up your eyes and your ears and put some cotton in your mouth. And you better start paying attention, because you've got some major lawsuits coming around. If you don't, smarten up. And I did not know that some of you had not even bothered to meet the chief of police. I admire a chief of police. I admire him. I really do, because this is what Callexico needed for a very long time. I know for a fact that the man that runs a department, that the man that runs the city, gets phone calls from the city council, hey, get rid of that girl that's in front, because I'm sending you my sister. Hey! You know, that's the kind of crap that's been going on, and you guys know it. So what's wrong with you? I had a lot of respect for the new person that came on, and I still do. And I hope that when I walk out of that door, I still do. Because I'm gonna tell you one thing. I'm not from here right now, because I live in Heber, but this is my hometown. And I, I'm, people know me for walking and knocking on doors, and I can raise hell. And this is one time that you better think twice of what you're gonna do. Because I'm ready to go. I'm ready to go and fight you guys. And you guys know who you are. I don't even have to say anymore. And I'm serious. Okay? And watch what you're doing. Because I do know for a fact that the DA is watching every step you make, and we've got a hell of a good DA. And don't underestimate him, okay? So thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you get some sense knocked into that head.
Next person, Manuel Hernandez.
Happy meeting, everyone.
Morning.
Hi, Mandy. Happy birthday. Yeah? And I have to spend it here, huh? Okay, um, the first thing I wanna say or address is performance. We all talked about performance towards Mr. Bostick. I'm here to support, um, his performance. If we talk about performance, gentlemen, why don't we have a policy to evaluate performance of the city council? Have we thought about that? Think about it. You, some of you are doing a terrible job. Mr. Kim, can you look at me? Mr. Kim, I'm addressing to you, sir. I'm talking to you.
Okay.
You are doing a terrible job already. Mandy, you need to learn to see the overall picture. Your decision again can create calmness here, can create balance. This is your opportunity. I received some information over a newspaper of some stuff that happened in two thousand and eight. You know what? I don't care. This is your chance to make things right. You have kids in this town. You don't want this kind of stuff in our town. I'm sure you don't. I'm sure you do want a progress in the city so your wife can have a job. We all want that. Mr. Kim, when you went to my office to request permission to put signs in my office, I allowed you. I had a couple of conversations, you and I. And you know what? I thought you were a smart man. I said, you know what? Go ahead, put the signs up, I'll support you. You talked to me about, um, how interested you were in the quality of food of little kids. You gave me a bunch of good arguments. I expect more from you. Do you think if your mother saw you the way you are performing now, she would be proud? Do you really think that? No. You are wrong at this point. You are making the wrong choices, and you need to know that. Thank you very much, and I hope, Mandy, that you take in consideration what I, what I just said. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next person, Angel Espaza.
Angel Espaza, ten forty-ninth, Fort Moreno. Good afternoon, councilmen and councilwomen. I have a couple of very basic questions. And Manny just kind of said something right now, which is, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kim, have the courage to look at people in the eyes, as you're not doing right now. Um, look at people in the eyes when the citizens are talking to you. Right now, you're, you were on your phone while people were having really passionate arguments towards you and your actions. So, my first question is, have you met with Mr. Bostick and understood, to understand what's going on? If not, why not?
Answer it.
Council doesn't have to answer the question from the public.
He doesn't want to answer.
Why are you calling out a special city council meeting at such short notice at the time when many can attend?
It's on purpose.
That's my last question. I'm gonna wait till you, it's a very simple question. Can, can he answer that question?
I'm, I'm the attorney for the city council. I typically don't answer questions from the audience. It's up to the mayor's discretion as to how he runs the meetings. Um, typically, this is not a question and answer process. It's a time for a public comment. You can make your comments. Nobody has to respond up here. So unless the mayor directs otherwise, I would say that that's a, going forward, this is a comment period, not a question and answer.
Okay, well, those were my two questions. Thank you.
Next person, Mr. Romero, Daniel Romero.
Daniel Romero, Callexico. You know, I came for this meeting more to listen more of the same. Uh, challenging Warren's administrative, uh, success, says stories, and as well as the success stories that Chief Bostick, uh, has done here for the city of Callexico. But, Mr. Kim, you disrespected the United States of America by not doing the pledge of allegiance before this special meeting.
Exactly.
That, sir, is dictatorship. I was stunned, I was floored, that you chose not to do the pledge of allegiance. So obviously, your allegiance is not to the United States of America.
That's right.
It's only to yourself.
Wow.
Now, I don't understand why, I, I mean, I get it. You don't want Chief Bostick to stick around because he's, uh, on a lot of people's heels, and, uh, city manager Warren is, uh, has been more efficient than what, remember, you hired him. He will, he's been more efficient than what you expected him to be. And apparently, and obviously, he's not playing ball. And, as mentioned, you've been here seven days as mayor. Two special meetings, and both you were involved in, in what was gonna be on the agenda. Uh, is this for the extra pay that you get during, as a council member, for extra meetings? It doesn't make sense why you're doing this, and why the rest of the council is even accepting it. If I would have been in the council at the time that you ignored doing the pledge of allegiance, I would have walked out. Because your first allegiance is to that flag. And you just showed right now that it is not. Thank you.
Okay. Does any person wish to talk?
Yes.
Any, the publics? So, you wanna go to the close session?
I'd like to make a comment. I would like to say that, the last person that asked, that, um, when I did find out about this meeting, I did ask, uh, Mr. Kim to cancel it. Uh, however, Mr. Kim, um, has not. We are here. With regard to the, um, pledge of allegiance, it's actually a little bit confusing, being that there still needs to be some parliamentary training here on behalf of our chair to actually understand where that pledge of allegiance occurs. So, a little bit confused if we're gonna have this now, because I believe the last time we had it after the closed session. Um, I guess what I'd like to add is that, um, we did receive correspondence last night, late last night, from JPIA that does once again indicate that, um, they are highly concerned with these uh, very expedient and in many eyes, uh, secret meetings that are going on to accomplish, uh, possible ideas that this council had, not including myself from a while's back, uh, wanting to basically destroy the reform that this city has going on right now, which I'm pretty proud of, and I know that the majority of this city is very, very happy of the work that's been going on. So, you know, it's absolutely frustrating, and I know it's frustrating for you also, Mr. Moreno, that, uh, we have to sit here through these excruciatingly embarrassing times. But, uh, this is the government for you that we have at this point. So all we can do is, what you're doing now, is come out, be informed, watch what's going on, demand answers like you did, Mr. Espaza. I'm sorry you don't get those answers from this chair. We don't have any answers from his as well, from him as well. Mr. Kim has not spoken to me since he started three years ago. So, um, it's highly uncomfortable to be working in this environment, especially when all your heart is with your community and just wanting good things. your heart is with your community and just wanting good things, not only for the community, but for the staff. And I know that all of this is very stressful on all of you. I'm sorry it's like that. I'm very sorry that you all have to go through the stress. It's very stressful for myself, and I'm sure for John. I see that the other three are pretty cool about it. But, you know, one question I do have, and I know that you all are asking, is, why? Why do you want to get rid of him, Mr. Kim? Why? Why? And up until now, I don't think there's anybody that's had that answer. There's a lot of, a lot of accusations, gossip, innuendos, this, that, and the other, he said, she said, but formally and professionally, this council should answer to you, the public, why this intention of wanting to get rid of these two administrators that are doing a wonderful job for us? Why is it happening? You need answers. I have that question. I believe you should ask that question as well.
Mr. Kim, if I, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. The purpose of a special meeting is to bring items that are under a timeline or time-sensitive. I'm looking at this agenda that's right before me, and I see two items on the agenda that, in my opinion, are not time-sensitive. What we're doing is, we're wasting time, we're wasting resources by bringing everybody together at 3:00 PM to discuss items that can be discussed at a regular meeting or perhaps even a workshop. Mr. Kim, why are we having to come to a meeting? I think the public has a right to know, because you're always wanting to inform the public on everything that happens. I think they have a right to know why you called this meeting on these two items, and why you say they're time-sensitive.
Could it be that, that the thing that Mr. Real is talking about, that something's gonna go down tomorrow?
I am not done. There's also information that council members have.
This is not the discussion time.
Let me finish. There are not, there's also information that council members have that they have not shared with the balance of the council, so that we know what's going on.
Right, Mr. Real.
They are holding information, and they're not sharing it, as they should, with staff.
Very unprofessional.
And when I speak of staff, I speak of city manager, perhaps city attorney, and the balance of the council. So, I'm a little disappointed that I am being, not given the information, and not being privy to the information that they have. If you can address those issues, Mr. Kim, I'm sure that the community would be very grateful towards you.
Mr. Mandy?
You are, you are correct, John. There is some information. Why, why I was the council member picked to be given this information, I, I, I mean, it, I don't know. There is some information. I guess because of the whistleblowers, or whoever they are, that are coming forward, you know, they, they, they don't wanna be brought up to the light yet, but my understanding is that they will, tonight or tomorrow. So, the news, the news media and everybody, I.
The suspense is, the suspense is killing us, really. You should just hear. I think it's your job as a council member.
We cannot talk about this. This has been given to the Department of Justice.
What about transparency, Mr. Real?
Please don't interrupt it, please.
You cannot interfere, but, look, I, I'm really.
Please, you, you.
Look, the only thing, the only thing, I don't think I tell everybody is that it, if it's very frustrating being up here and not being able to scream out the top of my lungs, what's going on? I'm not, I just can't play with somebody's life that way, because it's not my life, it's their life. And so, you know, all the, all the only thing I tell you guys is, within the next couple of days, you know, what has to come out will come out. I mean, I know that there'll be a statement made today as well, but, I mean, that's all I can say. I don't wanna, I don't wanna jeopardize anything, so.
Mr. Castro?
Well, basically, I'm here because the administration called me for a special meeting, and my, that is my position, to be here every, every, every council meeting, and also a special meeting, and that I know what is gonna happen, that I know that if I read something, no, I read the agenda, regular agenda, and that's it. So, I'm here to, to support and to see exactly what's going on, in order to look for the benefit of this, benefit of this community. That's it.
Thank you.
Also must warn you, Mr. Kim, that we also received another message from JPIA this afternoon that indicates that, according to whatever occurs this afternoon, if you do move forward and have an adverse decision with regard to our chief or our city manager, they will initiate cancellation one more time.
Mr. Tado. Mr. Tado, you had the microphone to take your comment. Okay. I have to inform the several things of the community. First of all, Pledge of Allegiance, that Mr. Romero was mentioning same things, that we always does, the close session was, before the, after the close session, open meeting, we have a Pledge of Allegiance. So, whoever accusing me, then accuse the years. Second, we have.
Mr. Kim, accuse who?
Oh, accuse of, past. Okay.
Yeah, yes, continue with you. Continue.
That's when it starts. So, you don't do it during the regular meeting?
Yes, continue with you.
Okay. The other one is, the, I called the meeting, I like to have a meeting, a regular meeting, but I've been having requests that's time-sensitive, so I believe that is reasonable. I tried to call the meeting last Friday together, but the city staff didn't put all that agenda there. They said, I'm too late. Okay? So, I tried to call the meeting, was yesterday, yesterday, and city staff didn't post it. So, I have to put my, my notice at the front of the door to push them to, to post it. Now, they posted this, that's why we have a meeting today. What I, what I, my duty as a mayor, any council member, reasonable agenda bring to me, I have to call the meeting. Well, once come, once I take the, take the consideration, under mayorship, I'll call the meeting.
Mayor, I think this is going off topic.
Okay.
We should just go to closed session. Is that, I mean.
Okay, before I come in, I spoke with the JPIA, and we, they never contacted me before they wrote the letter, and they had only one side, one side information to the carders, but I confirmed to them, we were very carefully, and any, and hard system is our cities. So, we will, I myself made a cautious decision. We five, I believe, five council members' decision, I respect them. I believe they are, one way, the other, they have interest of the Calixco's benefit.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me just read the text from JPIA. This came in at two, at 2:42. I guess it would have been 1:42. Richard, please contact me immediately following the council's action regarding Bostic's contract. If they terminate the contract, I will place the notice of intent to cancel on the agenda for tonight's executive committee meeting as an urgency matter. Thank you. That's the insurance company.
Okay.
With all that, I would suggest that we now adjourn to closed session.
Okay, we convened from the closed session, or we didn't finish the closed session. After we finished the open session, we're gonna go back to the closed session to finish. It wasn't the finish.
We did not say that in closed session.
Well, I said that, I said too.
I didn't hear that.
Yes.
We did not say we're returning to closed session.
Yes, we.
No, that was not said.
We discussed, we discussed returning to closed session on the first issue, city manager, performance evaluation, after the open session on the second issue, I believe.
Yeah, that's, that's what I've been told, and then I finished the meeting.
I thought you mentioned, we discuss it next Tuesday.
No, I said that after we come back.
I'm asking the city attorney, Mr. Kim, was that for next Tuesday that we were gonna do the evaluation?
No, I believe that Mr. Kim discussed doing the evaluation after the open session on the chief of police issue.
I thought we agreed that putting these types of meetings with these subjects at this hour and not allowing the general public to come was not appropriate, especially for transparency purposes.
Okay. We're gonna call for the meeting first, and then we're gonna have a convenient report from the lawyers. Call to the orders and attendance, I believe, Ms. Gabi. All five council attended. The Pledge of Allegiance, would you lead by the, Mr. Real?
Ready, begin. I pledge the oath of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a whole.
Okay, closed session announcement.
There's nothing to announce from closed session.
Okay, approval agenda?
To approve the agenda.
Second. The vote?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Three to two, pass.
And the reason why we're saying no is that this, this subject, and that's very important for all of you to know, that the hiring and firing of a specialty police chief in a closed session, under a special session, is inappropriate. Any legal.
Thank you, Mr. Tado. Okay, the public comment and the public appearances. Note, not to exceed the three minutes, these three minutes. This is the time for the public to address the council on any item on the special meeting agenda. The mayor will recognize the you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and the place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personnel or slender remarks. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. I believe we have one more person, item number two, person's name, Martha Luis? Martha Luis? Okay, I would like, I do like to register my position, but I do not wish to speak. But, it's not, okay, approval contract for the Michael has in terms, police chief. Okay, because I don't know about the position is, yes or no, I don't see it, but I believe, assume it, also approving the positions. Thank you. So, is there any, any public comment is done? So, we go back to council members. As lawyers, is there any, any things we cannot discuss on this one public? Would you let us know? How far we can discuss on these issues?
Yes. I'm sorry, repeat the question. I thought you said, let me know if there's anything we can't discuss as we go through this, but.
Yeah, number two.
Let me know if I misunderstood.
The number two, how far we can discuss? We only just discuss the contract, or we can discuss the amount of the contract? I believe we don't, we don't.
For all of the reasons that we discussed in closed session, which I'm not gonna go into in open session, we've advised you not to discuss this issue at this special meeting, and to instead agendize it for a regular meeting. I can't discuss why in specificity, but you've all been informed as to why that is. Our legal recommendation at this point in time.
So, we cannot discuss much?
You cannot discuss, you can only vote on it.
Again, we would, we would recommend that you not take action on the item whatsoever, that you not discuss it, that you table it to a regular meeting. If you choose to do otherwise, we've discussed all of the various reasons why we think that legally that would be a bad decision, but again, if you choose to move forward, that you do so knowing the potential consequences.
Okay, I have one more person, I believe one more person writing the memo. This is gonna be the last one. We're gonna close the public comment.
I also want to make a comment.
I don't have it.
I also want to make a comment.
You talked at the, already at the, before the meeting. Yes, because you already have talked the issues. Yes, she's talking of the two slips together, no?
I did one for public comments, and I did one for number two.
Okay, then I'll let you have to talk first, then.
Okay, this is on number two. So, this is, I guess, about the chief. Mr. Kim, Mr. Castro, you have the nerve to come and vote on this when you haven't even met with the chief? Again, you are a bunch of hypocrites. If you're going to fire somebody, at least meet with them, so you can have grounds to fire them. You guys could have, could have saved the city a whole bunch of money, because we've been paying him for being a consultant, for being an interim. You usually pay more for an interim, because you think in 30 to 45 days, it's going to be over, and you're gonna have somebody that's gonna take it over. That's how it works. You guys don't understand that, obviously. You could have saved us a lot of money by giving him a contract before the 45 days, and it's been how long? Since January, since December? I can't even remember anymore. That's a lot of money, Mr. Kim, and you keep wanting to save money for the city. Next time you have an agenda, don't even go on the warrants, don't even go and say, oh, I wanna see why we're paying this, because you are wasting money on this. Give him a contract, and let's get this city going. You're jeopardizing us again with JPIA. You need to quit that. And, I saw the government code where it says, listen to me. You're being rude, mayor. You're supposed to listen to your constituents, instead of talking. There is a government code that states, I don't know if it's in the Brown Act or where I read it, that you cannot have any agenda item, meaning, having to do with any salary or any executive on a special item meeting. We've done this before, we've gone through this before. Did you not learn that time? Obviously not. You cannot do this on a special meeting. It has to be on a regular scheduled meeting. You need to quit calling your special meetings, they're getting old. It's not funny, it's costing money. Go home, both of you, and go read the Brown Act. Go read the rules of order and learn them. If you're gonna be mayor for a year, Lord help us all, you need to go do that, instead of sitting here and wasting time, my time, because I had to take an hour off from work, you guys should pay me for that hour. I shouldn't have to take an hour off work to be here. It should be for all of us at 6:00, where we can come after work. So, you owe me. On top of that, my taxpayer money pays for your worthless paycheck, for you guys to do this crap. So, get your act together again, go in there, and then come back out and say, no action taken, and let's all go home.
I have a request for the call to recess, I can recess the meeting.
Now, you're gonna go recess, really?
For what?
For what? Are you recessing for?
Prostate issues?
You haven't started.
Who's the mayor, Mandy or Mr. Kim?
What's that? Request that I recess.
For what?
Just, if I could have a clear.
You're gonna make them wait again? I mean, come on, people, everyone is so stressed out.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just have a clear record, are we recessing just to take a break, or recessing to closed session?
I want to recess to take a break. I need to speak to somebody, yeah.
He's gonna call Willie.
We're gonna recess, Mr. We're gonna recess for 15 minutes. Okay, we are reconvening from the recess. Let's say 5:15. Next person, okay, Susana Favela? Please come to the podium to speak. Next person is Esther Gomez. Then we wrap, we're gonna wrap up the public comments, and then we're gonna go to meeting, the business items. items.
Good afternoon. My name is Susana Favela. I'm a native here from Coletzaco, and I was very happy that we had all this going with Warren being now hired in and with Bostic, everything that he's doing for the city. And it really disappoints me that you wanna get rid of him, because I grew up here. My grandparents are native, they are also pioneers of the city. And I have seen the city go up and down, seen a lot of council people that have really worked for the city, which I commend John for what he has done. But, the two of you, Castro and Kim, I'm very sad to see you guys, the way you guys just go against everything. Coletzaco is here to progress. We are not here to go backwards. And I'm glad that we hired somebody from out of town, because this way, it's not, "Oh, you're so-and-so's relative, or you're so-and-so." They're not here to make friends. They're here to do a job. And Mandy, I'm sorry that you keep tittering back and forth, because you just don't know where to go. You know, think of, this is Coletzaco, this is our town, this is where you grew up. Please, consider not getting rid of Bostic. He's doing a great job. I wanna be... I wanna keep saying that I'm proud to say that I grew up in Coletzaco, because even though I moved away and came back because of my father, because he needed me, because he was sick, I came back. But, I was always proud to say that I was a Coletzaco bulldog, and I grew up in Coletzaco and what the city was like. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Favela?
Yes.
I have a more person to talk. Final person, Esther Gomez.
She went home.
She went home? Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, as a council, I have some requests from Mr. Mandy.
I believe we should reconvene in closed session.
Reconvene in closed session? Okay.
I've had some discussions with Councilmember Real, and I would concur that I think it'd be a good idea for the council to reconvene to closed session. I believe it will be brief, and then we can come back out.
Okay. So, we're gonna go to...
What would be the item that we're gonna be discussing this time?
It'll be item number two, Chief Bostic.
But, we are going to close session again at 5:18. Report from the closed session, lawyer?
Yeah, although there's technically nothing that I need to report for Brown Act issues out of the closed session, I would like to advise everybody that the council's decided to table both items until they can be discussed at a regular meeting next Tuesday on a regular agenda.
We adjourn the meeting at 5:23.